I will rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hand. Can I get an approval of the minutes?
Motion approved, minutes June 14th, June 30th, and August 11th. Motion approved, June 14th, minutes.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? I actually have some corrections. On page one of five, the very last sentence is niprous, I think it's niprous, is career exploration, I think it should say is a career exploration program. On page two, the third paragraph of the principles report, the middle sentence is a list of exceptions in the S R three funding, and it says scheming equipment, it should be streaming. On page four, under policy, under policy read, I think we're actually missing a motion there for the JAB policy coming forward. It talks about Kyle reading the statement from NHSBA, however, it doesn't talk about him bringing forward the actual motion to discuss the policy.
Right, because it was that second motion for then the meeting.
Which is in there, yes, but the first motion is not there.
Correct.
And then at the bottom of the last paragraph on the second sentence, it should read would like to see a real thorough review. This is through. And then on page five, the second paragraph, looks like it's missing some words, it should be being, Audrey Kelly stated that the revisions being discussed were brought to the board prior to the meeting. Does anyone else have anything?
So was there a third, because that other motion looks like it was on page five.
It is.
Five, Eric has found.
I think, I think it's just misplaced, it should be first. Well.
So it's there, which is fine.
There's a motion there for the changes, but there was no motion listed to actually bring the policy forward. That's what's missing.
So if Eric said it'd be a motion to hold a special meeting within the next thirty days.
That was your second, that was the after motion, when it failed.
You're right, it was the first one. Okay, that's it.
Anybody else? All in agreement with the changes?
What did you say my statement was?
For the last one. You were talking about that the revisions were brought forward and discussed previously, and what it states is revisions were brought to the board prior to the meeting.
Yes, they were brought.
They were discussed previously.
More motion, amendment? I move to amend Kyle's motion by incorporating the changes that.
Second? Any further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Extentions? Motion passed.
Motion approved, minutes from June 30th?
Is there a second? Discussion? I have some changes on this one, too. Under the policy review, I think the two paragraphs are just reversed. It should open with the motion first, and then shared proposed revisions to the policy, so I think those are just backwards. And then on page three, the very first sentence talks about how I had mentioned that it is a slippery slope, but it is missing the opt-in, opt-out part of the discussion and keeping track of it. Anyone else have anything? Motion for amendment?
I move to amend Kyle's motion by incorporating the changes proposed by him.
Second?
All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion against. Number three for JAB?
Motion to approve, August 11th, 11 minutes.
Second? Discussion? I don't have anything on this one. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions? All right. Public comment, please state your name and your address as you go up to the podium. The agenda item is intended to give Guilford citizens a voice and the GSD an opportunity to hear directly from the citizens. This is not intended for questions and answers. Questions about programs practices may be directed to the respective administrators during the school day.
Yeah, Bethany Cody, 21 Harvest Run. Two things, the first one, I know you can't answer, but I was wondering if there's been any movement to make these meetings available via Zoom or some other way, because I know that, I do love to attend these, but it does get challenging for, you know, two hours on a Monday night when you have kids and sports or other activities. Two, I just want to express my support for the revised language for the JAB policy. I have seen it. I know as a community, and I've spoke before about this, we don't all share the same beliefs, and that's okay. But I'm very happy to see you guys as a school board come together to make amendments to the best that we can to serve this marginalized population. I actually do agree that parents should be involved in the decision when the child does want to change their gender status, so I think that's very good. And I absolutely believe that we should address students by the pronouns that they prefer. I won't talk about suicide statistics and all that stuff, because I already have, but we all know that we need to support this population. And I think that people personally that are stretching for a First Amendment or freedom of speech violation is just that, I think it's a bit of a stretch, and it really doesn't do harm to address someone for how they want to be addressed. Thank you.
Beth? Anyone else?
My name is Bob McLean, I live at 161 Wild Vegas Road. And I would just like to say that I've had two children just graduated from the Guilford school system in the past few years, back to back. My son Jack and my daughter Molly. And they were very proud of the school they went to, we have a very good public school system here in Guilford and here in Gilmanton. And I just want to thank you and all the people that have come before you for doing what you do for our schools here. I am a candidate for state representative from Belknap County District Six, which is Gilmanton, Guilford, and Laconia's Ward Two. And the education issue is one of the things that I'm really focusing on, because I feel a little bit that it's underattacked. I've heard what she had just commented on, I totally agree with, and you guys are, I'm sure will do the right thing, and it's a difficult time making some of the decisions that are coming down the way, and I know that you're a nonpartisan body here. The other issue that I just wanted to mention is the school funding and the voucher program. I know that you have no saying it one way or the other, but I'll just let you know that I think that it needs to be revised, I understand the issues that certain children may not fit into the public school setting and may get a better education elsewhere. But I think that the way that the state is funding it at this point in time needs to be adjusted, because a lot of the money is just going to people that are already sending their children to a private school or homeschooling. And again, that's, I just wanted to say that and introduce myself, and thank you again for the awesome job that, especially all of you over here, because you are dealing with my children every day, thank you for the awesome job you did educating my children, thank you.
I'm Catherine Kiefer from 169 Cherry Valley Road. I want to echo the calls, please make these available on Zoom as another busy parent with other commitments. But primarily, I'm here to support the updates to the JAB policy. In addition to lots of other reasons that have been mentioned at these meetings, I have over fifteen years' experience in providing support and advocacy to victims of sexual and domestic violence, and dating violence and stalking. Multiple campus climate surveys have shown a very high prevalence of sexual and intimate partner violence victimization among the trans, non-binary, and gender non-conforming population. We know there are additional barriers for this population in reaching out for help, advocacy, mental health, and other vital, sometimes even life-saving services. I believe it's crucial to do all we can to keep the door open for this marginalized population to get help, including making policies that will help them and not harm them further. Thank you.
Skip Murphy, nine Guilford Glen Road. And I have something for the school board members. I think it is self-explanatory, and it's all right to know for the books that are in the district. And this will be posted on Granite Rock later on this evening. So anybody can see it that they wish, and they can ask any questions that they might want answered. I am finding myself at a disadvantage, as opposed to the two ladies who stood up before me, I have not seen the revised standard of, or what is being proposed for policy JAB. I agree that if it is true that you are not going to keep the parts of JAB where you gave yourselves the power to lie to parents, I thank you very much, I think that is a great step forward. And I will be, depending on how this falls out, I will be talking to my lawyer to perhaps drop that part from my lawsuit. Because that was one of the deals that drove me to the lawsuit, which was how in this Dillon's Rule state, which a subdivision of the state granted itself its own power without supporting legislation, gave itself the power to lie to parents, either by omission or commission. Getting rid of that is a big deal, and bringing you back into line with the philosophy of a Dillon's Rule state. I do disagree with the first lady who spoke. Violating the First Amendment, freedom of speech, and New Hampshire Constitution, Articles twenty-two and thirty, is a big deal. It is a huge deal. Because once we citizens lose that, and that government then has the right and the power to tell us how we are to speak, we've lost freedom altogether. As Orwell basically outlined in nineteen eighty-four, if government controls the speech, they control the thoughts, they then control the politics, and they then control your life. We have seen this through history in other countries. This country was founded on that, without the freedom of speech, we would, we might be singing God Save the King now. But our founders said, no, everyone must be able to speak their conscience, no matter the setting or the circumstances. And government should make no law against that. And you, as a government body, fall under that structure. I have other things to say, but I'll wait till the next one, next public session, because I have no idea what the changes are. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, everyone, Amber Latour, Pinecrush Drive. I want to start by complimenting the new middle school administration, my daughter had a great first week, so I just wanted to start with that. I am here in support of the JAB policy. I think it's really important that the policy not out kids and work towards a parent's right to know, but on a student's timeline. And I think when you make these policies, you have to think of the best possible household this child comes from, love and support and tolerance, and then we have to think about the opposite side of that, and kids fearing being marginalized by their own family, displaced by their own family, abused by their own family, and I think the policy needs to consider every kid in this. And what, be student-driven when the student is ready, you guys should never out a child. And I think if you even remove the trans, non-binary from this conversation, if my daughter came to an administrator or staff member with something they were scared to tell their parent, I wouldn't want that administrator just go ahead and pick up the phone and say whatever, I would want them to counsel my child and help them have that conversation, right? So I think that's important, and I think if you out a child, you are putting that child in a very, very bad position, I think, and even if they come from a loving, supporting household, coming out can be scary and traumatizing, and so that needs to be, you need to have the most caution with that. And I think it is important to use the preferred pronouns from the student, and if you're still talking about poor speech, you don't care about our children, that is not putting our children first, and that's why we're here. I don't think it's about parents versus the school, I think it's about figuring out what's best for our children, and that should be the center of any policy that you make. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, Janine Panker, Belknap Mountain Road. I'm here, this is my first time talking, I don't know, I can go on and on, but tell me when to stop. In support of the updated wording, the one that is protective, keeping it as it is and not protective space. I was trying to jot down my thoughts so I wouldn't be scattered. But as a psychiatric nurse practitioner, I work with students, with patients of all ages. I see the suicide rates, I see the risk that increases when they're not in a supportive environment. I see how it's decreased when they are in a supportive environment. Second to that, I see when transgender is not pathologized, and that is, sorry, I just went to tears, too, a big issue that I've noticed, too, in the wording around this, that parents' rights now, this and that. Yes, if it crosses over into that acute risk for a child's safety, then regardless of if the diagnosis is depression or gender dysphoria, a parent should know. That doesn't mean that just because the child identifies as a different gender or is exploring the thoughts around that, that it's an automatic pathology, and that should be treated as such. There is a comment about, you know, doing what is supportive for students, and of course, I think, I like to think that that's actually where everyone is coming from, and maybe that's where the perspective is, you know, conflicting, that, you know, this is supportive and this is supportive and not meeting eye to eye. More importantly, is following the research, the research supports that when you have a protective space for these students, that it decreases the risk for suicide by forty to sixty-five percent. So it doesn't matter about what works in my household versus someone else's, or what is your opinion versus another person's opinion over what is more supportive. The data speaks to it, and when you take away those protections, you increase the risk of suicide. I think that was it, if I think of more, I'll come back later. Thank you.
Any other comments? With that, I'll close public comments. Superintendent's report.
Thank you. In your packet, I've included a twenty-two, twenty-three safe return to in-person instruction and continuity of services plan. This is something that is required from the government along with our S R funding, so I've made quite a few changes to it, basically that we're in person, but would like the board to vote on that, so that I can post that on our website and send it out to parents and staff as well. In the, in your, in your notes, in my report, I'm looking for the board to reaffirm the anti-discrimination plan, as well as the suicide prevention and behavior response plan. Those two plans are in the school board's Google Drive, so we did not print them, if we need to print hard copies, we can print hard copies for people. There was one update that. On page, page two of the suicide prevention and behavior response plan, our crisis counselor here at the high school, Kelly Caravona, is responsible for delivering the training for staff, but also responsible for updating the plan. And on one side is what she has revised, on the backside of that handout is what was in the plan, and rather than naming a specific suicide prevention plan or a suicide prevention program, we are, we've taken the name out of of how we would work with elementary school students, middle school students, and high school students. And so the NAMI CONNECT program is what we've taken out of the plan, and we've just used, that we would use any type of prevention programming with students. And so Kelly is certified to teach suicide prevention programming, and she does work with students. She works with high school students, she will be present when the high school students go through the seventh grade wellness class as well. But the CONNECT program actually is not built for middle school students, it is a high school programming plan. So she really wanted to make sure that we were taking that language out of the program, or out of the plan, so that it did not appear that we were saying something that we were not doing. So we look for action on those two plans as well. Again, if people would like a hard copy before they take action, we can get a hard copy for people as well. The Partnership for Public Health has reached out to our nurses and myself, they've scheduled two clinics, one for the middle and high school students here on October fourth, the other at the elementary school on October seventh. That's for flu and COVID booster shots. We will obviously have parents register and sign off on permission slips for participation in those clinics. Totally optional clinics, but we are offering those like we have in the past. Thank you to our PTA for, they put up backboards, basketball backboards on the outside playground at the elementary school, as well as here at the middle school, right before school started, so that was a nice surprise to have those on the first day of school for our students. I've also included in your packet, the board's packet, a draft copy of the twenty-two, twenty-three school board goals. I think I captured everything from the school board meeting in August, as well as the leadership team meeting in July. We look for approval of the goals as well. In your packet also, I gave you a, some information about S R three. The items that were proposed and approved by the school board earlier in the spring have been, activities have written, been written, we've done, done some work on those things. We still have a considerable amount of money left in S R three, about four hundred thousand dollars, I believe it is. And so we have a few more activities that we're looking to include in S R three programming. We've got Gunstock Adventure, so we've been able to kind of finalize a number for participation, and we would, how much that would cost, so we would do that with our ninth graders at the high school, our fourth graders at the elementary school, and the eighth graders at the middle school. We've done some work on multi-tiered systems of support at the middle school so far this year. We're looking for some more support for continuing that programming at the middle school for this coming year, as well as next year. And then under academic support, potential for a permanent, a second permanent substitute, we have hired one right now. Just with our staffing needs, and I will get into more staffing in non-public, but wondering if a second permanent sub would be beneficial for the school district this school year, just because of the leaves that we have that are already lined up. And then the elementary, middle school would like to have that permanent sub position for next year as well. We're also looking to move forward with Exact Path, and this is an assessment tool that we would use with our learners. This assessment tool gives us learning pathways, so when students take the assessment, there will be pathways that they can help remediate work, but also help to extend work with the Exact Path, and Katie can answer some more questions about that, if you'd like. Middle school PE is looking to do, to buy some scooters, skateboards, helmets, and a ping pong table for their PE program. And then for training, we had some teachers at the elementary level this past summer participate in science of reading training. We would like to bring that to our school district in June of twenty-three, and offer that for our elementary and middle school teachers to participate in that science of reading training. And we're looking into pricing for Kegan Training, that's cooperative learning training that we may do district-wide. We have not received any quotes on that yet, though. I did have a conversation, I emailed back and forth with Nicole briefly about streaming, and I have asked Jay to look into a more reasonable cost for streaming school board meetings. It's certainly set up, we have a Zoom account, we can set up a Zoom feed for streaming school board meetings. One of the things that he mentioned to me when we were in the auditorium, the computer that we were streaming on was hooked right into the audio system of the auditorium. So our audio was much clearer when it's hooked into the audio system of the auditorium, then I think it would be up here, but we're going to test that, and hopefully that may be the cheapest fix, if that's what we want to do. But he was going to investigate that more, and I anticipate having information for the school board in October. In your packet, I've also included the New Hampshire School Board's proposed resolutions for 2022. The delegate assembly is on October first of 2022 at eleven a.m. in Concord. Prior to COVID, school board members did attend this delegate assembly, I'm not sure if there's anybody interested on the Guilford School Board in attending this. But if anybody needs help in registering, I can certainly help do that. Just let me know about these. And lastly, under safety and facilities, I have scheduled security assessments with the school liaison for the New Hampshire Homeland Security and emergency management for all three of our schools, as well as the Meadows property in late October and early November. These assessments were done four years ago. Um, again, we're encouraged to do these every three years. Um, some of the findings that came back from uh our November, December, two thousand eighteen visit, we've included in our safety grant that was submitted in August of twenty-two. We have not heard yet if we've been approved for any of that. Uh, just a couple of things um related to S R two as well, sort of mentioned this in the other part. Um, we are continuing to do social emotional learning using S R two uh money. Um, we're bringing su- uh men back to the elementary school to use uh with our K through four uh students. And we're looking to have the Tiger um presentation from Plymouth State University for the elementary school and at least fifth and sixth grade in the middle school, maybe um seventh and eighth. Trying to determine if it's aids appropriate. That's it right now?
All right, let's go back to student learning. Um, so we are looking at the anti-discrimination plan and the suicide prevention and behavior response plan.
Okay, I move to approve the anti-discrimination plan as written.
Is there a second? Discussion.
Same as it was when we amended it first year, correct? I didn't notice any.
There were no, there's been no changes to it.
Yep.
Okay.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion passes.
Thank you.
I move to approve the suicide prevention and behavior response plan with one edit.
Discussion.
So my, my edit is on page twelve, and I know we don't have it in front of us, basically, oh, it might. No, um, under the don'ts, um, there's a bullet number two in the last sentence. It's not completed, it just kind of falls off. There's like, it says, it, it starts into a sentence and it doesn't, but also I just wanted to make a suggestion. Instead of saying that um suicidal ideation is not normal, I think it would be more helpful to say it is, you know, a, a top, most serious mental health symptom and should be treated as an emergency, not necessarily like in a shameful, you know, not normal way. Even though, yeah, I get what you're trying to say.
Is that a bullet point also, or is that on a specific page?
That's in that bullet point, yeah.
That's in bullet points?
Yeah, it's in the bullet, um, the don'ts bullet two, last sentence is not completed. And then, yeah, right before that, they say it's not normal.
Any further discussion on that? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion passes.
Thank you. Nicole, can I call you about that? Thank you.
All right. Returning in-person instruction and continuity of services plan. Anyone want to make a motion?
I just want to know, is the C D C recommending Friday to the isolation motion for some?
Motion to discuss.
Yeah.
Motion to discuss the, the return of in-person instruction on the.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
The C D C, do they recommend, recommend the Friday to the isolation?
They do.
They do.
My other question on that is um, are we going to be following the D H H S guidelines, which is basically the C D C guidelines, which state you should wear a mask of high quality um through day six or ten, not recommend? And the other exception to that, according to the C D C's latest guidance, is you can have two negative antigen tests within forty-eight hours. So I guess my concern, knowing how crippling uh COVID could potentially be come winter months, as it has the past two years, is um, I would like to see us at least follow the C D C guidelines and say that students returning from isolation on day six through ten should be wearing masks um or have two negative antigen tests within forty-eight hours as per C D C guidance.
Is that different from D H H S?
Well, when I went to D H H S, it now links us to C D C because I think um what we've learned is that um we don't need to quarantine for as long. We don't need um to enact as many mitigation strategies right from the get-go. But as it evolves and impacts schools, we should be flexible in our thinking and add on layers of mitigation. And so what I did um was I just screenshot what it said on the C D C guidelines, which I just clicked the link from D H H S to C D C and then have um when removing your mask. And it, it says that you should have it for days six through ten. And I, and I get that some people might not be contagious after day five, but unless you have the negative antigen test, you don't really know. And I just think that we're putting students and staff at risk, and it's already, I mean, subs are limited. We're already, you know, dealing with some staff shortages. I think we should do our best to ensure that we keep students and staff in school and healthy.
So I agree, um, I would just like, you said, a quality mask, because I think, right? The information is out there now that these cloth masks, these drugstore paper masks actually might actually have a harmful effect. So I would, we gotta be careful, though, because N ninety-five masks are OSHA regulated, right? So we would have to have an entire policy procedure. Um, I don't know if it's different for, say, schools than it is for employers, but employers actually have to have, you actually have to have your employees take a pulmonary test to actually be able to make sure that you're going to be able to breathe in this thing for X amount of hours a day. So I just want to caution there. Um, because I, I, again, I, I think those, the, the lower grade cloth and paper masks, they're, they don't work. And can we really force someone to wear an N ninety-five mask without violating OSHA?
Well, I think it just says high quality. So I would like to see that we follow what C D C says, and I think we can be supportive as a district. I don't know if there's still uh funds for masking, but I know uh in my district, there was plenty of N ninety-five masks that were children's size and adult size that we could offer. Um, I'm not sure what the OSHA regulations are, but I'm going to advocate that we follow what C D C suggests.
Yeah, I would just wanted to find what a, what a quality mask is. And I, I, I mean, um, because like you have the N ninety-fives, which are quality, but then the K N ninety-fives, which they all come from China, and they, they're, they're harmful, they don't actually work, and they actually can have a detrimental effect. So I agree with you that a, a, a tightly fitted, you know, N ninety-five mask is going to provide some perfection. I just don't know if we can require children to wear those for uh a whole school day. I don't know, I don't know, because like, it's a OSHA, it's a very big um section in there. And there, when they talk about N ninety-five masks, there is a whole host of things that uh an employer has to go through before they can require those to be worn uh by an employee.
Well, I think we just, again, need to follow what C D C says, and I can hand you my copy if you want.
Yeah, I don't have it, so I'd like to take a look at it.
Yeah, and I think it's not necessarily up to us to say exactly what kind of mask it is as long as it's fitting with the quality.
I'm not sure that the C D C says only N ninety, N ninety-five masks.
Mm-hmm.
I think they have, actually talked about a variety of different masks on the C D C's new website.
They do. Yeah, and I just want to echo it, um, that I think that we should be in line with C D C as well, whatever the recommendations are. They get updated, then we update our, our guidance.
Kirk, do they give us an option of just putting on here that we'll follow the C D C guidelines rather than you having to update this anytime they change guidelines?
We can certainly put uh that we will follow C D C guidelines on here and, and uh just say that's what we're going to do. I think um people within the district are going to have questions about that, that's all. But we're, this is, I think, is probably more for families and uh staff as we publish this, that um they're going to have questions, and so I think this can help answer some of those questions. But we could just put uh, we're following C D C guidelines. And when you go to New Hampshire, D H H S now, it points directly to C D C now.
So I'm okay with how it is now. I wouldn't want to just blanket statement and say we're going to follow C D C regardless of what they do, because if they do end up saying, hey, mask the entire population, I'm going to oppose that. So I would want at least have a meeting to discuss that. I know there's a lot of uh parents that would agree with that. So I'm okay with how it reads right now, um, but I wouldn't want to just blanket, um, you know, follow the C D C.
So just a thought, you, your line that you crossed out actually says that you're following D H S, which I know is pointing to C D C, but if they split, you may want to just leave it as the H, as New Hampshire D H S. In case we go separate than C D C, maybe leave it the way it was. Even though it's.
That makes sense.
Currently communityally the same, I would leave it with New Hampshire in case New Hampshire goes, doesn't be different than C D C. Like you did last night.
Right.
I'm sorry, where are you looking?
Uh, on our isolation, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Making mask recommendation after isolation, we'll follow New Hampshire D, we crossed that line out.
Yep.
So I'm thinking, based on what I'm hearing, the thinking is, we should probably get that back in there.
And I think we can reference that currently, any D H H S is following C D C guidelines because I agree that I do think that we need to look at what's going on within our state, within our community, and make decisions based on what experts are suggesting.
So we wanted to add that line back in, so um, is there any other discussion on anything else? I know there's a lot here, so.
Well, under masking, it also is crossed out, um, reviewing New Hampshire D H H S guidelines. And then we have new language in there that says it's recommended a person wear a well-fitted mask in school for days six through ten after the date of the positive test or the date of the symptom onset.
I, I think it needs to say should, according to this, that's what it says.
Yeah. She was saying that, you know, there is obviously difference between should and shall, so I would agree, I have a problem with that.
So would it read, it is recommended a person should wear a well-fitted?
I, I suggested that maybe um revise that, that wording to say a person who has tested positive for COVID nineteen should wear a well-fitted mask in school or have two negative antigen tests forty-eight hours apart for days six through ten after the date of a positive test or the date of symptom onset, whichever came first when they return from their five days of isolation, which, if you want this, Kirk, I can just give it to you.
Thank you.
I'm just going to throw it out there, I, I personally, in our time, I think putting too much language in here is setting yourself up for more meetings if they change. That's all, I'm seeing as they evolve, so, so if they change it tomorrow, you're not going to change it again for a while. Do you know what I mean? So I think the more, if you just point to the one guidance, and whatever it is, is what it is. That's my thing, like, so as it evolves, it evolves. So the more level, level specificity you put in the policy, puts you in that situation where you have to have another meeting to have another meeting, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So to me, I, less is more, I think, in some of my opinion, just what's worth.
Adam, I'd be fine with that, but how does it get communicated out so that families know what the expectations are after a positive test result and returning to school? I know in my districts, the nurses work fairly hard to do that. I don't know if that is logistic, logistically possible or something that we should consider.
May, maybe, I mean, maybe put it up on the web, that's, here's the current guidance, you know, just copy and paste from wherever, the New Hampshire D H H S. This is the current guidance, and it's almost like the weather. You, when in doubt, go to the, go to the same page on the front page of the website, it's the current guidance. Maybe that, that way, at least as it evolves, you at least have a central place to go to and.
I'm fine with that, I just want to make sure that whatever we put out there, it's clear to all parties involved and easy to kind of enforce or.
I guess my fear is, is, I agree with you, that flip side is, if it changes, you're setting yourself up for a situation where you can't succeed, that's the problem. Unless you're willing to keep having meetings as they evolve if we get to that point. There's a lot of answers. Figures crossed, we're not going to have it happen again. So, that's all, I was thinking it was, that was my view.
What I was attempting at, but not as eloquent as you, Adam.
It was right there at the beginning, I'm sure.
It was, yeah. So with that being said, what does everyone want to do? Do you want to go with this specific wording, or you want to point to the actual website where people can find the information?
I'm fine with, with maybe specific wording.
I don't have the preference either, right?
Changing the should and then adding the words.
So, um.
So make sure we're getting the right direction, that's why I'm asking this.
So should we amend the motion?
No, it was for discussion.
Motion.
Oh, for.
All right, are there, is there any further discussion? Super motion for the amended changes.
Okay, I move to approve the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three safe return to in-person instruction at the Guilford School District as amended.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed?
Excuse me. I was, I was moving my, my pose up first.
That's your pose, before it's all four?
Yeah.
Okay.
I knew it was coming.
I preempted.
I knew I couldn't win myself.
Any, any extensions? Motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, the next point is resource management for the twenty-two, twenty-three school board goals. This would include the work that we did in August as well as the work from the leadership teams in July with their recommendations as well, um, to gain a motion.
I.
So our motion. So I'm looking for a motion for discussion.
Looking for a motion for more than.
Is there a second?
So I just, um, looking at the families and communities and E providing training on diversity and equity and inclusion for staff and learners. Um, right HB two recently passed a year ago in New Hampshire, and I think there could be some very um, there could be some opportunities here for us to, you know, depending on what type of content we're bringing in, to violate that. Um, so HB two, right, talked about, um, I don't have the, the verbiage in front of me. Um, Kirk, I don't, I'm sure you're probably familiar with it. Talking about the um, you know, uh, white privilege being inherently racist, those topics that was, this is in HB two, which passed last year by New Hampshire, signed by the governor, that made that, that outlawed that in schools to be tolerated. So I think that we just need to be really careful when we're getting into these topics that we're not violating the law. Uh, that was, I just want to really emphasize that. And I was really, and I just wanted to make that comment, because obviously it's, there's no content here, so I'm not going to say that that's what we could do. I just want to make sure that we're very clear that, you know, that we would make sure, we would want probably go back and read exactly what. that, you know, that we can make sure, we would want probably go back and read exactly what that language was in that, in HB2, and make sure that whatever content we're bringing in, that we don't violate that. That's all.
We had a presentation at the beginning of the school year, and we did not violate any of that HB2.
Okay, yep, because I actually, I was gonna bring that up at some point too, because I researched that gentleman. He has said some pretty inflammatory things over the years, and certainly espouses those views. So we wanna make sure that we were very careful that, you know, we bring in a speaker that seems like he goes around giving those types of speeches all the time, that he wasn't hitting on those topics while he was here.
Sure does.
Yeah. Started to research him and became very concerned with that language. So I'm glad to hear that we did not violate that.
Yeah, it was, it was really good. He was a great speaker. We were there to listen. It was nice. Um, and then something else I just wanted to add is that under curriculum C, it says in accordance with the state's requirement, continue to develop a competency-based system at the Guilford Middle School. And I thought we had a really good discussion about this during the retreat, and we had a great presentation by Katie. Um, and one of the things that we kind of came to was that we were gonna increase communication and education among students, staff, and parents. I think that's important to have that in there, because I know a lot of, especially parents and students have concerns about the competency-based system. So just making sure that, I know that that already is a goal, so including that.
Well, I believe that's included under number three, under families and communities. I think that's where we included that, to provide regular, regularly provide the communities of Guilford and Gilington information about learner performance, important events in the district, problematic, pro.
Problem.
Problem.
Yes. Highlights through multiple mediums. And then also under C, we added regularly communicate with all stakeholders to improve students, staff, parents, and community members in the district. Do you want that specifically under the curriculum as well?
Yeah, I can see how that would, that would work into that. Yeah, I just, I thought that it was a really great thing that they were gonna be doing that more this year, and so we just wanted to make sure it was reflected back to parents and students that that is on our radar and that it's something that's being addressed. But, yeah, you're right, it probably does account for it there.
That's how I interpreted anyways when it was added, so if that's not clear.
I thought we could be a little more specific, but I'm happy to hear what others think too.
Well, I can see both, both sides. I think the regular communicating with all stakeholders, so students were aware of how they were progressing towards the grade level competencies and staff and parents as well. So there was a common language or expectation. But I guess reading the bullet in three, it's more to me like progress reports or report cards type thing, but kind of training on what competency-based grading is. I don't know that your average parent really knows what it is, and they might be okay with meets competency or, trying to think what all the, it's different than in my, my district in terms of the lingo. But there's sometimes a wide range in what meaning competency is. And I think if we are doing a better proactive job explaining what, how grades are determined or how they've made growth towards competency or competent, might be something, but I'm not really sure how to reflect that in there. Does that make sense, Nicole? Is that what you're trying to add in?
So I guess can we add a C I that says effectively communicate com- competency-based, are you, what is, what does that mean?
To be competency-based versus traditional grading systems?
Yeah, and, and I think it's one of the common things that I've heard, and I think either you or you mentioned it in our last meeting, was, you know, you don't know until the end of the year that your kid's not meeting the competency. So how can we, again, communicate that, yeah, he's meeting competency? But, you know, I might have some concerns there, instead of leaving it just as meeting competency. It's like, okay, but this is what I'm seeing on a day-to-day, or we, whatever, however we, we want to assess that. But getting to the end of the year to find out your kid's not meeting competency is certainly a problem.
And if we're gonna add that line in there, will it need to be a little bit clearer on how that communication's gonna be implemented? And you can just say that we're gonna communicate it, but how exactly, you know? Because there is a lot to learn about it.
Katie, might you have any recommendations for that wording?
Sorry to put you on the spot.
No, it's okay. I was giving you a chance to, for you to think about it. Um, I think originally our intent was that we would be addressing through the communication piece that counts in family and communities, and that the piece under curriculum was more focused on the staff and the learner's experience. So that's, I think, where the leadership team was coming from in general. I think the point that Nicole and Jess were making is a little bit different than, what you referenced from our discussion in August. So I think there's part of understanding the curriculum-based learning model, but then the grading piece is another discussion. So I'm not sure which we want to make as a priority right now. Or, I think that's the difference between what you were getting at and thinking about.
Is there a model you could actually send out to the parents?
We can put something together, and that would be part of what we, our intent was with the communication piece.
Yeah. A really good start in place, and then we'll leave it to the parents asking questions.
I wonder if, um.
One second, Katie. Can anybody here out there, out there, can you, I'm sure you have your.
I wonder if it makes sense in, in the family and communities piece, under three, where there's a list, if we add one more piece there that addresses, um, and then I would, problematic highlights might be to the general. We could add something in there about the instructional models or something along that, along those lines. Yeah, and during our retreat, I got the impression that this was your plan anyway, was to have this communication, and it sounded like you were excited about doing that and kind of giving it a chance to roll out in a way that gave it time and space and understanding, and I just wanted it to be reflected in the goals. Kind of account for that, because I do know it has been a concern, and I hear, I hear from parents about it. Um, so I just wanna make sure that they know we're thinking about it and we're addressing it.
How about if we come up or try to come up with some language and we send that back out rather than trying to wordsmith right now, and that's, that's more challenging.
Yeah.
Could you, thank you. Are there any other changes or any other areas on those that people are looking for updates? Okay, thank you.
All right. Esser three.
Anyone wanting to make a motion for discussion?
I make the motion to discuss the Esser three proposal. Second.
Thank you. Discussion. I actually had a comment, Adam, regarding the Gunstock adventure where it's fourth, eighth, and ninth, and didn't know if this was a opportunity to do Gilington to put the kids together at an earlier age and start building those relationships.
That's an interesting question. I have a meeting tomorrow.
Bring that to anyone.
Are you, just a clarification of, of order, we only voting on the whole, or 2022, 2023 rating? The current request or is that for next year as well?
I'm looking for feedback and hopefully approval of all.
Okay, just making sure I answered the question.
Only one is listed under 2022-23 for the permanent subs two. Um, I do have a question about the MTSS, the student incentive.
Yes, and what is that? Um, so those were prices that were given to me through body covers for GMS shirts as far as showing our wings matrix. And then the other $2,000 was from Vista Print, and that was to purchase the motivational stickers, pencils, um.
Bookmarks, I think you said.
Bookmarks, yes, thank you. Bookmarks were on there. Um, typically you have those items when you do a rollout of tier one, but because we did it so quickly, we didn't have time to, to look at how those would be funded. Um, and of course, that wasn't within our general budget for this, for this year. Um, so I was hoping that we could use some of the Esser, Esser funds to, to support that work.
Uh, and then the other question that I had is the ping pong table for the middle school. Um, is that just one? What are the other kids gonna be doing?
They have ping pong. I think this is a replacement.
Okay.
I think they have, I know they have ping pong tables at the middle school.
Okay.
Just to clarify again, the things you just referenced, that's coming in next year. She said the set of her knowledge would be for next school year, is my wrong?
Twenty-three, twenty-four, yes.
Right, okay, so that's not something that's happening this year.
Well, actually, that's probably my mistake. It would be happening this year.
That's why I wanna clarify since she said this year, and I wanted to.
All right, so we need to move that to 22-23, Paul?
Yes, thanks. Oh, I'm sorry, Gunst, the Gunstock adventures would be for, for this year, Anthony, or I thought we, we're gonna try to do it in October?
Yes.
Okay, oh. Yes, buses would also.
Okay, so the only things that we should have in 23-24 is the permanent substitute, the exact path, and the middle school PE, and the training.
Yes.
And you said we roughly have 100,000 remaining?
Correct. Even though I don't vote on it, is there any compelling interest in moving some of that stuff to this year? Because people would help with, you've already lost this year. And your PE stuff, I mean, it's only five grand. I mean, is there a method to advance the spending this school year rather than wait till next year?
We could, we could certainly do that, um, with the PE stuff.
Yeah, I don't know. I'm asking, I mean.
Do you mean, um, because, you know, what a bad idea this, if it's gonna be good for next year, it'd be good for this year too, probably. Just like if. Yeah, I mean, just wondering what the rationale, why a year, why spread it out, just curious, because I'm taking a lot of the same lines out.
Uh, so the permanent sub, we've already hired somebody.
Oh, yeah, just, just the, the fifty-two eighty.
Yep. No rationale other than, yeah.
Just, just where it fell in the column.
Yeah, we can put it, um, in the 22-23. I just don't know how soon we can get things either. I mean, whether or not all that will come in before the end of the school year, things are definitely still challenging to get. Worth trying.
Yep.
I didn't hear the question, that's us two. And what about the exact path? Is that, because we already have some stuff in place?
So we're doing a pilot right now with exact path, so this would then be the, after the pilot.
I've been on vacation for a week, and I had to do math.
And I think it's ninety-five, two eighty.
Ninety-five, two eighty.
Sure Anthony has an abacus.
Twenty-two, twenty-three, ninety-five.
Uh, yeah, I have. That for 22-23.
Sure, ninety-five or eighty-five?
I had ninety-five.
Ninety-five, yeah.
I could be wrong.
I missed this, I'm out, so that's why. All right, so that's ninety-five, two eighty for 22-23, and I have one oh five, oh eighty-five for twenty and twenty-four.
Yes.
Anyone want to make a motion?
I move to approve Esser three proposal as amended.
Second, Nicole's.
And do you need the year?
Yes, I think we should spread it out and, um, up to, really, because if it comes in lower or if it comes in higher, then you've got it. What was the total for 23-24?
Ninety-five, two eighty. I thought that was 22-23.
Oh, second, 23-24 is one oh five, oh eighty-five.
Okay. I move to approve the Esser three proposal, um, specifying funds for the 22-23 school year up to ninety-five thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars. And for the 23-24 school year, up to one hundred and five, eighty-five dollars.
Second, then. Further discussion? All those approved? Any opposed? No standing.
Thank you. The last thing I would just say is in the secretary's folder, there's a DOE twenty-five that all school board members need to sign it. If you have questions, I think Amy will address that in her presentation. Thank you.
James, is that it for action with it, or?
Yes.
I just want to kind of make two statements. I just want to kind of make two statements, maybe go to the board as well. Um, Zoom thing, which is why we use it, but we don't do any video, we just do audio. That's been so far, that's been the compromise we've done, we've dealt with this so far, we kept the Zoom after COVID, but we kind of just kept it to audio only. This is a big, it's kind of a happy compromise, most people seem happy with that, or it's worth, figured I'd share that. The other thing I'll mention to the rest of the board, um, I know delegate assembly, delegate assembly, uh, was something that I know, I'm, my tenth year, we never took it real seriously in the past, um, but then, fast forward to some of the resolutions that, um, some, if you read through them, didn't always agree with some of the resolutions. So the thinking, so I've kind of amended, but I think now I prioritize, we actually vote now as board on where our position is on these resolutions, and we send a delegate, because we want to make sure our vote is heard. Because there's been some resolutions that have been a little, uh, interesting. Because things you may or not agree with, so you may want to read through them and see if you have a real strong opinion about some of these, because you may want to sound like someone to go, just think aloud. That's how things, that's how policy creates, that you don't agree with, to be honest with you, so it's worth, so. That's it.
So, the recommendation to the board that you read through those and let, uh, me know if you, Eric Kirk, know if you want to have a meeting on it. Alright. Principals report. Danielle, is there anything you want to discuss in your report?
Nope, there's any questions, I'm here to answer, we had a great opening, we're going to go.
Any questions for Danielle?
Thank you so much for a great start to the year, have a great year at GES. I know I'm having a really happy time in the Gardner.
For what it's worth, she's legendary, her, she's amazing, you can't even deal with her.
It's a sugar shock.
I know. Something, something like, just like, you know.
Ah, welcome to your first week.
Thank you. Um, I just want to report the same as Danielle, we had a great first week. Um, pretty amazing that at the end of the week, we did end up soli- having an all-school celebration, which was promised to them if they had memorized the acronym WINGS, which is part of our tier-one work. And all three hundred and thirteen students successfully said it, probably day two, and we had a great recess, um, at the end of the day on Friday, it was a great way to wrap up a week. Um, staff and students are happy, we're in a good place.
Any questions?
I just wanted to say thank you for everything that you're bringing to our community, not only as a parent, but as a school board member. Thank you, I'm welcome. I did know that, my kids had a great first week, they loved it.
Good.
Thank you.
Anthony?
Yes. Uh, just to echo the other two principals, in my eighteen years at Guilford, this has been the most upbeat opening that I have been a part of, just students, staff, the community members, they are just, I think, they're really looking past what's happened to us over the last two years, and they really excited for what opportunities lie ahead. So it's just been great to be up in the community, hear the feedback from parents already, and I'm excited for what they have. And I'm open to, uh, answer any questions that we may have.
Anyone have any questions?
I just want to echo, thank you for a great start to the year, and it was very interesting reading through the survey with the cell phones, especially the comments, so interesting.
Very insightful comment.
Yeah.
From students.
So that's only goes to parents, correct?
Correct, yep, that's the last piece of the pie, and then we'll bring it forward and, um, start working on where we go from there next.
Okay, so we won't discuss any other, yeah, we just still need one more survey to go forward. Um, for the hands. Um, the only comment that I had is I thought that freshman jumpstarters went really well. Um, I did get feedback from a couple of freshmen, not just my own children, I mean, I got two in there, um, that they got very lost, because I guess we were still leaving those wings, um, and they couldn't actually go and walk through to each classroom like they would have in the fifth grade, when they do the jump there, um, so they thought, just feedback for you, it would be nice if they could do that, and then they wouldn't get lost. Because they had a hard time, the, the four kids that I talked to had a harder time transitioning with all the other students that were in the hallway.
Yeah, there were some challenges to finishing the last thing, and emptying and putting all the classrooms back together, just with staff shortages.
Yep.
Everywhere but with our custodial staff. I am looking for a motion from the board, you'll see the back of the packet, I hope I get your approval to close out the class of twenty-twenty-two account and open the class of twenty-twenty-six account. You'll see the memo of the board.
I move to close out the class of twenty-twenty-two account and open the class of twenty-twenty-six account in the student activity accounts. Second.
Any further discussion? To note for the public that's listening, the twenty-twenty-two is an easy roll balance. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Thank you.
Katie?
The only, um, item that I have to add is that we have T-shirts back here on the back table for you to, um, for each of the board members, Adam, you're already in that, you can take one back for, um, Michelle. So on opening day, we presented all of our staff, um, member in the district with a T-shirt that went along with our theme, um, our road trip for the year, so you'll all receive, you can choose which one you'd like, I bought two different sizes for you, so we wanted you to be a part of, um, our spirit that we have to share.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
That's awesome.
Do you need anything for the grants that have been applied for or not?
No. No, so we, um, for the, the piece that I put in here about the save grant application, so we didn't go for early, the early, um, application date, uh, deadline, so if you've seen the release, um, the first round of, um, money has been dispersed, but we didn't apply for that early decision, so our decisions will be coming later slot.
Any questions for Katie on her report?
No, I just want to say thanks for a great start, especially this is your first year, you did a great job.
Amy, business administrator report.
I have nothing additional to add, um, other than all the financials provided are audited financials. Um, the DOE twenty-five, that's in the packet that needs to be signed, is a standard, the DOE twenty-five that we do over here, creates the MS document that goes to the Department of Revenue, so they're kind of sister documents, if you will. So you'll have the MS, which has its own cover sheet, that it goes to the Department of Revenue, and the DOE, which goes for DOE, so you have to sign it. And then our audited financials, which is great that we have our audit in the middle of summer, so it gets it done and, um, detailed for us, so we have to have the stuff like that. And I'm happy to go over, they're gnarly documents. Um, it's called the twenty-five because it is twenty-five pages. So if anyone would like to go through that with me, I'm happy to explain what they all do.
Do you need a motion for the budget entries?
I do.
Yeah.
And that's a healthy list, it's two months' worth, it's our opening entries. Um, hopefully it won't be this big again, but it's kind of self-explanatory, why?
Does anyone want to make a motion for the entries?
Probably all at once. Motion to approve all of the journal entries from seven one twenty-two to seven thirty-one twenty-six.
The numbers.
The.
Looks like one through nineteen.
Oh.
Because they're chronological.
Numbers, one through nineteen.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes.
Is that the only one?
Policy first read.
Uh, policy first read, we have policy IHBB, programs for gifted and talented students. We did have this policy, it was, um, a short sentence maybe, I think, uh, or two, um, at the most in our policy manual. We've, uh, the policy committee has recommended the, um, school board association's model policy, and then we've, uh, also, I think, added a little bit of our language to it as well. Next is, uh, policy BIE, board member and district employee dignification policy. And, um, we've looked at the, we did look at the, uh, sample policy from the school boards association, revised that, and, um, this is, um, the updated policy from the policy plan. Policy JVAB, transgender and non-binary, binary students. Um, this was updated at the school boards meeting, uh, in June, and then it did go to policy committee, um, last Friday as well. And, um, the recommendations are in bold, um, for update.
Has this been to the attorney, has it requested?
Um, it has not gone to the attorney.
Anyone have any questions or comments or fresh leads?
Um, I have a few comments on, uh, JVAB, um, I just got right in order here, so not until we get to section three guidance, um.
Excuse me, please, Kyle, could you hold your mic close so we can hear you clear? Thank you.
Uh, okay, so on the section three guidance, um, A privacy, um, so I know we had had quite a bit of discussion at the last meeting, and don't want to turn this into another three-hour thing, so I just want to be, uh, clear and concise. Um, I, I first of all, I think we're in a much better place, I believe, legally speaking, um, than where we were before. Um, a couple of things I just want to, again, comment on. Uh, one thing that I don't agree with is the changing of, um, on the, so again, section three guidance, A privacy, one, two, three, fourth line down, we cross out biological sex and change it to gender assigned at birth. Um, I do believe the correct scientific terminology is biological sex at conception. Um, so I, I don't agree with, with that change there. Um, I think then when we get down into the next paragraph, um, below, um, so when contacting a legal, when contacting the parent or legal guardian of a transgender, non-binary, binary student, school personnel should use the preferred name and pronoun. Well, so just like we've been saying for students not to be compelled into speech, I don't think we can compel school personnel either. So I think that if you were, if we're putting that in the policy, um, then that could violate a teacher's, um, conscience or, um, objection to that, and we have seen now many, many lawsuits where teachers are actually receiving some pretty nice settlements, um, from the districts that they sue. Um, I'm okay with students preferred name, because I think a name is a name. Um, again, that's assuming that we've had a plan in place and the parent is aware of that, but the pronoun, again, I think that a lot of people have a conscientious objection to that. Um, so I would like to, to see that, and pronoun taken out. And again, whether you believe it's right or wrong, legally speaking, and the courts are affirming that it is a violation of the First Amendment to compel speech by virtue of forcing someone to use a preferred pronoun. I think, uh, that's, that was for that portion there, um, then, so, okay, so still in, in the privacy section, um, school personnel should not disclose any information that may reveal a student's transgender policy, a, a status or non-binary presentation to others. Um, and then we say school personnel shall include the parent when implementing a written plan, okay? So my question is, um, where is the line? So we agreed before when we discussed, right, we're not here to police speech. If two students are talking amongst themselves, that's their prerogative, we're not here to, to police that. But at what point is the school, um, you know, fostering or facilitating this transition without the parent's consent? Let's say the student hasn't formally requested to be, um, have this plan, to be able to use the, the restrooms, the locker rooms, et cetera, but I think it's still a pretty gray area, um, where this could be going on behind the parent's back, and so what is the line there? And I'm kind of asking that honestly, like, I don't know. Um, I, I do, um, I, I, again, I feel very good about the fact that when there's a plan in place, it shall include parents, I think that's imperative, but again, school may not disclose information to others. Um, so where is that line? I guess I don't know, and I'm, I'm asking. I don't know if anybody has any thoughts on that, um, because again, if it's, right, so we talked about a student seeking out a counselor or whatever, well, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, but don't students have to have parental permission to be counseled at school for any other host of topics?
They could go to their school counselor, or they could make an appointment, they do not have to have permission to go to a school counselor.
So the parent wouldn't have had to have signed off on that previously?
To see a school counselor, it's like a guide, it's a guidance counselor, no?
Yeah. Okay, because again, that, so that, if, to me, if a student is at that point where they are expressing these things, um, to a counselor or a staff, that, that's the time the parent needs to be involved. Because again, it's who are we to judge if a student is actually really in serious harm? Or maybe they're just really afraid to tell their parents because they feel their parents will disapprove, yet time after time, the parents end up embracing their kids and loving them, and that is, in my opinion, the best course of action is to have that parent involved once the student started to, um, you know, reach out to a counselor. So again, I think that's another gray area that I just, where is that line between the school, again, fostering or facilitating this transition behind the parent's back, prior to the student actually requesting, or the parent requesting to have a plan in place?
So ethically, our school counselors cannot do that? If a student discloses that they're thinking about this identity, or they're exploring this, the counselor cannot then pick up the phone and call a parent ethically, that would be against our code of ethics. We cannot, we cannot require that our counselors do that. There has to be an area for a safe space for these kids to be able to have these conversations about their identity. The first person that someone talks to about it is very rarely their parents. So having that safe adult really is gonna reduce suicidal ideation, which is super important in this population, and one of our most at-risk populations in our school. Um, and then to address the gender assigned at birth, um, biological sex creates marquee water because there is an existence of dozens of conditions that blur the lines between male and female that has the prevalence, it, you, it's about the same chance as having twins. So saying, um, gender assigned at birth is actually more protective for our district because it's more realistic for what people have as a gender assigned at birth.
But it's not scientific.
Yes, it is.
No, it's not.
Yeah, it is, that's what we do.
So this is what I don't want to do.
That's what we do.
So this is gonna go to the attorney, and we will find out.
Okay. I'm fine with that. And we had, we had a two-hour debate on this, Kyle, and that was the time.
Well, I didn't, I didn't agree to that, I mean, this is.
Right, but we voted on everything that night, so bringing it up again tonight isn't.
This is why we have a first read, so that.
Right.
Because that night was a two-hour meeting, right.
But we also had a two-hour debate on this policy.
By the end of that two-hour meeting, I was ready to go home and wait to see what the melded language is going to look like.
Which we voted on that night.
And, and now that's why we're here again with a first read, that's the process.
With our voted language, right.
Right, so again, just because we had a meeting two hours long, doesn't mean I agree with everything that happened, so I'm, I'm just.
Yeah, so this is the first read, so that way we can express opinions if something was not done correctly. One second, Adam. Um, so I appreciate the comments on both sides, let's keep it civil for one, and I know you guys are.
I think.
Yeah.
So, um, as far as the, the counselor goes, it is my understanding that the counselor is, she is ready for the ethical piece of it.
Well, so what I want to do with the attorney would say.
No one? Not done? Um, the, ethically, yes, they cannot disclose any of that, that's also with a private counselor. Um, the, ethically, yes, they cannot disclose any of that, that's also with a private counselor at the same time. I know that personally from my own children being a counseling, they are not allowed to discuss anything that was discussed in that room. So, um, she is correct in that aspect. I do know that our counselors tried really hard to have parents, had the children have those conversations with their parents. And that's what they have removed in that room.
And, and maybe ethically, law trumps ethics every time. So again, we're talking parental rights, um, that is where I'm coming from in that.
Some of my questions similar, in a, I'm trying to translate what I, what I'm hearing the question be, which is, so when does, if it's not the counselor, when is the next one? When is that next threshold that meets? That's what you're asking.
That's what I'm asking, I want to clear.
So if the counselor can't do it, when is the next line? What, when do the parents get notified of any of this?
Because theoretically, theoretically, it could go all year long, right? And be wanting to be addressed and called this way.
No, no. That's not how it works. As soon as, as soon as a student decides to change their name in the student information system, change their, change their pronouns, then, or have any kind of written plan, or like, including bathrooms, any of it, that would be like a tickler system to bring in the parents. So we are not looking to exclude parents whatsoever. In fact, it's best outcomes to have them involved as early as possible.
It absolutely is.
When the student is ready.
I, I do remember that conversation now that you're saying that, because that was the triggering event.
Yeah.
That we said, because that means they've committed. As a student, as a, as a, as a team, they've committed that they're ready to, to make that next transition. I want to be referred to as this pronoun, therefore I want to change. And that's the trigger.
So, okay, so just to kind of clarify then, um, no school personnel could call a student by another name or pronoun without a plan in place? Am I understanding that correctly, right? So the student could divulge to the counselor, but the counselor cannot affirm or call them by their name or anything like that unless they have a plan in place?
That's my understanding of the policy, yes.
And that's what I want to clarify, is that's where I feel like there's some gray area. And again, I think, just to reiterate what Kirk said, we have, we have always involved the parents, right? But again, this administration isn't gonna be here forever, the policy will. So I wanted to make sure that we are clearing up that gray area, so where exactly is that line? And so I just wanted to just flesh that out and understand. So I, I just, I still feel like it's gray, and, and so, yes, so I, maybe we, um, we can, um, sort of, for, um, can't think of the right word, describe what that plan is. In other words, uh, what, what is the process, yes?
The process is once they have.
No, but in the policy, I understand what you're saying, but, well, it.
It says.
It says when im- implementing a written plan, so what is?
Yes.
Right, so. Would, and I'm, and I'm asking because it doesn't say it here, could there be a scenario where a student is referred to by their name without a plan in place?
So, we can't control what every student does in the building?
No, not, not only students, I'm talking school personnel only, right? So for the school, would say, okay, yes, I'm going to call you by, whether it's a teacher or whether it's whatever, school personnel.
Yep.
Would they be allowed to affirm prior to a plan in place?
We've told people that, no, they cannot.
Okay, and that, so that's what I would like to see in the policy.
However, I'm gonna throw this back at you, your First Amendment, freedom of speech, that we cannot tell a teacher that they can't.
Well, I don't think it, well, again, because in, in, in a school, like, so yes, outside of school, teachers have the First Amendment right. Inside of school, they are a district employee, and employees do not have the same First Amendment rights at work. And that's a hundred percent true, because you, you, your employer has a right to tell you what you can and you can't say at work. So that's my, 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 I guess my concern here is that we could have, and for lack of a better word, a rogue teacher who has this going on in their classroom that nobody else is aware of, and it just spirals and spirals and spirals, and before you know it, now there's other things the parent hasn't been involved.
I think we should just move to have this go to the attorney, because when I look back at the discussion that we had on June thirtieth, and I know it was two hours and it was long, but I think it was thorough, I think it was detailed. All of the things that we compromised or I guess voted on are reflected in this current draft or first read. So, we're gonna be here debating again for a long time, so I just.
For the sake of time, I'm not trying to even get into necessarily debate.
I would say if there are very specific questions that you want from the attorney, um, forward in the court.
I will absolutely do that, because again, that, I just want to be clear, I don't, I don't like gray area. So, okay, then I will pose those questions, and then I would, uh, ask if they be forwarded to the attorney then. I guess the last thing, um, so this policy, and I know I've asked, I've asked this before, this policy was essentially derived because of Senate Bill two sixty-three, right?
Correct.
Yeah, uh, which also, uh, so which said you had to have a, I guess, a policy or something, whatever, what I don't, I won't actually do that in front of you. My question is, so now that we have essentially, um, accepted the fact that the, um, equal protection clause from the Civil Rights Act, and now we can have a subset of policies for a particular protected class, when are we going to have our policy on religion? Because that is also included in Senate Bill two sixty-three.
So we haven't had a recommended policy on that from the school boards association. It is covered in our anti-discrimination plan, it is covered.
Well, gender identity is also covered in there as well, I don't mean to.
Point of order, this is not on the agenda.
Um, I think it's, I think it's relevant, um, and I'm just asking a question. Um, that's my question, so I guess I can pose that again, but I believe that according to Senate Bill two sixty-three, we've got to have a policy for all of these, um, so I, I, I would like to see that happen.
You can put your recommendations forward. Anyone else?
That's all, okay.
Anyone else have comments on any of the policies? Thank you. Policy second read.
Uh, policy second read, uh, policy A D B and policy G E C are drug-free workplace and drug-free schools. Um, those policies did go to G E A in June of, uh, June twenty-eighth, uh, twenty twenty-two. Um, the policy A D B is for, uh, the student, uh, part of our handbook, our policy manual, and policy G B E C is, uh, for our, uh, employees. No feedback from G E A. And policy I H B H, extended learning opportunities. This was updated, and again, this was also sent to G E A on June twenty-eighth.
Any feedback?
No feedback.
Okay. Anyone else make a motion on these policies?
We can find it in the one, four.
Should be fine.
Should be fine. Um, motion to approve second read, um, A D B as well as I H B H.
A second.
You want to move it to?
Hmm, oh, there was another one?
G B E C.
Uh-huh. Oh, I was stuck, I'm sorry. Okay, amend the motion to include G B E C.
A second.
That's it.
Further discussion?
I am.
All the votes in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion's passed.
Thank you.
Time to the second public comment. Please state your name and your address. The agenda item again is not intended for questions and answers. Uh, questions about programs or practices may be directed to the administrators during the school day. Anyone else want to step forward?
Of course. Skip Murphy, still at nine, Gilbert Glen Road. Um, public comment. In item number three of the agenda, this time is not intended for Q and A. I had a while ago raised this entire issue. Elected representatives are to be held accountable, if you look through the New Hampshire constitution, I think it's Article six, I could be wrong on that, at all times, not just at times of election. It is clear that with the policy that I have to go through my legal son's teacher, and then the vice principal, the principal, and then to the superintendent, I can go no further. So how do I, and I'm bringing this up again, how do I get to hold my elected representatives, otherwise known as the school board members, accountable if I am not allowed to talk to them? Effectively, you have shut all of us out on this side of the podium. We, you are not approachable. So I'm going to ask once again, because when I brought this up the last time, there was a bit of heated discussion, and it was decided that, yes, we probably should have a time when parents and voters and taxpayers could address their elected representatives, and nothing happened. Sort of like when, after your first meeting, Nicole, you came up to me after the meeting, you said, I want to be representative to everybody in the community. You had said that you'd be happy to talk with me, and I waited, and I waited some more, and I sent my information through Kyle, I'm assuming that he forwarded that, and here we are a year and a half later, and I've heard bupkis. So I'm gonna ask that again, that the board take this up. When are you going to allow yourselves to be questioned by people who want answers? And that are, and those questions are not pertinent to the staff, because we don't elect the staff, we elect you folks. So that's the one thing.
Okay, if I could just comment on that, um, so I think for, right, it's, it's, it's essentially sake of time, why it's like this. I do think that sometimes we probably should engage more, I think sometimes we just don't have the answers, um, in front of us. What I would suggest to you is that if you wanted to address us directly, to send, send us an email, and then, in my opinion, I would bring that to the next meeting, I would share that with, with the chair, and I would get that, um, on the agenda, whether it's under the other section. But I would say just showing up, it, it's, it's hard to have the answers that you might be looking for without being prepared for those questions. So I think maybe having some sort of preemptive, you know, email to each board member, um, I think could get you the responses that you're looking for.
I used to do that all the time, and I found that the results was, were very unsatisfactory. Because I never got to speak to my, or had emails back from my elected representatives. Everything was shoveled over to the superintendent, that's not what I was looking for. I even put a bill into the legislature this past session, demanding, given that, I understood that you're not always gonna have all of the answers, but sometimes simple questions you should be able to have right off the top of your heads. Complicated answers, take more time. And I allowed for that in the legislation. But I am asking again, as somebody who tries to stand on the rule of law and how our constitutional republic is supposed to work, why I can't address my elected representatives? So that's one thing. Second, and I did not know what, uh, Kyle was gonna bring up, but I'm gonna agree with him. My background is in biology, I specialize in subcellular respiration, did research at BU Medical School during my undergrad days, and yes, life starts at conception. And the s- the sex of an individual, of that new life, is determined at the first mitosis. And you can use all the other Latin names that we use to go, as that new life develops till that baby is finally born, but the biological sex is always determined at conception, period. I loathe the phrase "assigned at birth" because there is no little clerk with a clipboard saying, boy, 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 or girl, girl, girl. And I understand there are abnormalities. Hermaphroditism intersects, but those are such a small percentage of the normal development. You can't use the exception to force the rule to be dismissed. Um, I had some other things here. I'm going to agree, and I can provide, as a political blogger, I'm watching this stuff all the time. The tide has turned from that first time when J B A was first introduced, way back when. Kyle is right. The latest one that, uh, court case that just hit the, the, uh, the blogosphere, the alternative media, as it were, teacher was forced to use preferred, uh, pronouns. She just won a ninety thousand dollar lawsuit. There are others as well, and I'd be happy to send you all the URLs for that. So unfortunately, Kyle, your, your conver- your, your argument, you can't say, can do this, and then also go for this as well. I am a First Amendment absolutist, because when we lose our constitutional values, we're screwed. You can, there are certain things that you, as an employer, can do and tell your employees how to react, but you cannot, because they will take you to court, and more and more are doing so, and they're winning. You cannot coerce their speech, which is exactly what I'm hearing. Again, I'm at a disadvantage, I do not have, uh, the marked up J B A in front of me, so I could actually do my homework. I would ask that I get a copy of that, please, so I can make a better argument, one way or the other. But again, I'm gonna say what I did a while ago. There are two kinds of states, home rule states, which basically allow any subdivision of the state, of which a school board is, to do anything that they want, as long as they don't violate state or federal law. A Dillon's rule state is far different. You are only allowed to do those things for which there is legislation. If the New Hampshire legislature, the House and the Senate, has not passed a law signed by the government, you cannot do that. And again, I'll bring it up, my lawsuit, you cannot coerce the freedom of speech. First Amendment Articles twenty-two and thirty. You, there is no RSA you can point to and ask, if you haven't asked, I'm gonna tell you again, ask your lawyer, instead of, well, I'm just gonna leave it at that. That's between you and your lawyer. Ask them on the two points. Are we allowed to do this? What is the RSA that allows, that gives us the power delegated by the legislature? And folks, this is basic civics. But from the first public session, where people say, oh, it's not a big deal, well, the exigency, I'm sorry, mispronounced that. But the situation demands that we put First Amendment freedoms aside. I'm sorry, you don't, you're not allowed to do that. You can't do that. Otherwise, we go post-constitutional, and then anything is possible, and trust me, having friends that have served overseas in such broken countries, you don't want to go there. And yes, it can happen here in the United States. Um, there was something else I had.
Skip, I'm gonna.
No, I think, I think that's it.
Four or five minutes.
Yeah, well, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Jeanne Pinker, fifty-nine, Valmet Mountain Road. Um, okay, so a few things I did want to address. Um, Kyle, I think you had mentioned, and you spoke about like gender assigned at birth and the verbiage. Um, it's six weeks until anything is differentiated in the womb, so that verbiage would be incorrect anyway. Essentially, you'd be misgendering if you were to go by that terminology and decide you knew gender at conception. Um, it's also not trauma-informed, and we have trauma-informed practices for a reason, because they're protective and they keep kids alive. Uh, second, noted embracing kids and loving them for, you know, identifying their transgender status. One in three kids who are transgender and non-binary do not feel that their home would be supportive of it. One in three kids who are transgender and non-binary do not feel that their home would be supportive of it. LGBTQ youth who found their school to be LGBTQ-affirming and supportive were far less likely to have suicidal ideations and attempts. And further, those who were in a community that felt supportive of that, meaning all of the words that they hear surrounding them, were far less likely to have suicide attempts. Another thing was, you noted, how do we know what the line is for safety? Well, that's why the school has masters-level trained professionals. So it's not on the teacher, it's not on any random adults in the house, in the building. So identify if they need to call a parent or have an intervention, there are resources right there in the building by design. As far as the parental rights and deciding if a child should be able to talk to a counselor without consent, that consent is implicit when you send your child to a public school. So that is to protect their safety, to protect the school and all involved. You know, at no point was there any sort of resources cited for the change in verbiage or anything that's not supportive of what was proposed in the language. And it really seems like it comes very much from feeling and opinion, and I just want to stress how important it is to follow the evidence, because again, that's what keeps kids alive. And defer to the trained professionals, because you have them right there in your building. That's it.
Anyone else?
May I take one more light, small light at the apple to read the legislation?
As long as everybody else is down first.
I also brought in 10 different copies of SB 263. It has now been enrolled in RSA 193, I want to read you Clause 39. Discrimination prevention policy required. Each school district and chartered public school shall, in other words, an imperative, you will, develop a policy that guides the development and implementation of a coordinated plan to prevent, assess the presence of, intervene in, and respond to incidents of discrimination on the basis of age, sex, gender identity, sexual orientation, race, color, marital status, familial status, disability, religion, national origin, or any other classes protected under RSA 354A. I take exception to what the superintendent said, well, it's just covered under discrimination. The fact that you brought forward policy J-BAB for a specific protected class and the language that says shall, this subdivision of the state must develop a policy. I have said this before, and it fell on deaf ears. You are mandated by the legislature to develop a separate policy and not just put it into or believe that it's covered under anti-discrimination or harassment. You need a policy for each one of these things, just as distinct as you are for policy J-BAB. Otherwise, you are not doing your jobs, and you are disobeying the plain language of the law. Thank you.
Anyone else? With that, I will close public comment. I entertain a motion to go into non-public.
I move to go into non-public, RSA 918311C. Aye, aye.
Hold on.
Okay, yes.
Josh, yes.
Oh, yes, yes.
Tell me, yes.
Thank you all.